Go ahead and start without her.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so I will call the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees of the City of Spokane to order for March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And visitors, there are signup sheets there on the table for you to let us know that you're here. And then if anybody wants to give a public comment, there's a signup sheet for that, and we'll do public comment at the end. Just to make sure everybody can hear me okay, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I'll start with our land acknowledgement. All of the Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians, Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chewahla Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this thing. All right, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, then we'll consider the agenda adopted. So the first action item is approval of the February two thousand and twenty-four minutes.
I move to approve the February two thousand and twenty-four board minutes.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And now we have approval of the February two thousand and twenty-four bills and contributions.
I move that we approve bills and contributions in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-three cents.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And now we are ready for the financial report with Nicole.
Thank you. Okay, so for February twenty twenty-four, we'll start out with the library operations. So for the cash and investments, as the February is closed, the library has the ability to three hundred and thirty-five days of operating costs and available cash. That's that balance, which includes reserve for capital and the net of the encumbrances, is six million, six hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. For the expenditure trend for operations, our operating expenses for February totaled one million, seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Of that amount, seven hundred and thirty-seven and three thirty-three was for personnel costs. Our library books and materials were one hundred and six thousand, two thirty-seven. Our third-party security guard costs totaled forty thousand, six hundred and forty-one. We saw twenty-five thousand, eight seventy-one for capital building improvement at the central branch. This included the some repairs for some vandalism on restroom doors, as well as restroom door installation. We had some keypads put on some of the bathrooms there, so we can open that to the public. Also, we had a repair of a broken window on the first floor. The utilities costs totaled twenty-four thousand, five ninety-five. Snow removal charges were eighteen thousand, one fifty-three, and our interfund costs, which do include first quarter, were twelve thousand, six eighty-nine. And to circle back on the building improvements, none of those issues, as far as the broken window or the vandalism to the doors, qualified for an insurance claim, those were over ten thousand dollars. So moving on to, oh, do we have questions on operations before I move to bond? Okay. So for the bond fund update, so here's a snapshot of what we've spent by site as of the end of February. That remaining encumbrance balance does tie to our current cash. So that's something that we tie out every month, and now it's pretty easy to do, since we don't have anything invested. So currently, we've got seven contracts that are open as of February, and that's obviously the only contracts that we will have executed through the end of the term. The majority of that being Alpine at over one point six million. I'm sorry, one point three four million. And then for business office updates, so that some of the new city administration staff, they recently implemented an initiative to reduce the amount of purchasing cards that are authorized for staff across every single city department. So the reduction of library purchasing cards does have a significant impact on library staff as well as the business office. We're currently working through that now. We had a total of twenty-four cards that we manage, so we've reduced that by over forty percent, so we'll be at about fourteen cards. So some of the higher purchasing departments within the library are the facilities team and IT staff. Typically, we spend on average about thirty thousand per month in purchasing cards, so it's pretty high volume. So we're going to kind of work through the amount that we have now. If it ends up being too much of a burden, I'll probably open a couple more purchasing cards up, but we want to be a good partner with the city and try to do our part to make things better for them, so. And then in early February, we did wrap up with a two thousand and twenty-two petty cash audit. That audit was conducted by the Washington State Auditor's Office. The audit began in December and concluded with no findings or recommendations. Yeah. Do we have any further questions?
I do have a question. The contract with Spokane Arts shows that it ends on six thirty?
What's that?
So we still, we still have some installations to do. We're looking at a piece that used to be at the East Side Branch, repurposing it at the Shadle Park Library. And what's the other piece?
The seventies, yeah.
Yes, the seventies alphabet. That used to be at Central. We're also looking at installing Shadle Park as well, just with within the contracted amount, so it's just figuring out how to re-analyze those pieces. There's also been some small portable pieces that we've been putting and fitting into different meeting rooms that just we didn't hit up yet.
Okay, thank you. The amount we have left on that contract is just under fifty-three thousand.
Okay. And we'll also take care of the remaining two kiosks that will be installed, because we've wrapped those with local artists working.
Yeah, and does that come out of the design work? Does that come out of?
From marketing department?
Not for those pieces. Because those are with Spokane Arts.
Okay, thank you.
How often do they move them? The portable pieces? We haven't moved them yet. So. We'll probably be refreshing them. We haven't talked about when, but it would make sense to move them around the city, just so, you know, folks in different neighborhoods could see them.
Thank you.
They're moving.
All right, any other questions for Nicole? Okay, excellent. Thank you, Nicole. And next on the agenda is the chairman's report. And I would just like to recognize and thank Mary Starkey for her long years of service on the board. This is going to be understanding that this is her last meeting, and we will miss seeing you, everyone. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will move on to the library executive director report.
I'm going to start mine with thanks for Mary. We've worked with Mary for the past ten years. You started with us when we were in not the best situation. Our budget kind of sucked. Our buildings were falling apart. And you have been such an advocate in the community for us moving forward and a champion for us for the past ten years. And you've also served as a mentor for me and a shoulder for me in some pretty difficult times, so thank you for that.
Well, and I thank you. This has been a real privilege, so I thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's meant a lot to me. Thank you.
All right, no tears, no tears. Moving on with the written report, really proud moment this past month in February, the Washington Library Association Conference was held here in Spokane, Washington. And we had thirteen different presenters at the conference, which is huge. That's like something that Pin County would do. So we're really, you know, hitting above our weight with the services that we're offering. And I think it, you know, is really re-energizing to see just the amazing work that staff is doing here at Spokane Public Library. As part of that, we also conducted two tours of the central library. And Amanda Donovan actually gave the opening remarks at the conference. Big Spokane presence for that. In addition to that conference, we're actually going to be hosting Library Journal's Design Institute in early May. This is an event that's held twice a year throughout the country. And they invite architects and library folks, and they tackle different design issues, whether it's environmental or just bad design, or just how to design more around human behavior. And that's going to be held right here in Spokane, because they, people want to see what we've done here. And part of that will be a tour of Central Liberty Park, the Hive, and I think we're going to try to put Shadle Park in there as well. So it'll be about a hundred and fifty or so attendees, but a really great moment for us to get back to the library world. As far as our DEI efforts this month, a discussion we held just last week, and it was on Project Lonely, which really focuses on using creativity to combat loneliness. And I think we do a lot of that work in our community already. We did a little something different. It's Amanda's idea. Participants brought something that they created to the meeting. It was a really great opportunity to learn a little bit, something different about each other in a really, a really, an environment where we can just kind of approach, approach things how we, who we are in a different personal way. Our star spotlight for February went to Skyler Noble. Thanks for the sound effects there. Skyler's been doing a lot of heavy lifting around our communication for our security strategies. As you know, we've been revamping how we're going about that, and good communication goes a long way, so thank you, Skyler. We also held our first of four half-day all-staff training modules this past week. And it's been a focus on stress and trauma and how to deal with those things. As you know, the library staff really at the front line of a lot of the community issues. So having those skills in the back pocket is going to be essential. And these are trainings that have actually been offered for free by the Center for Trauma and Stress Education, which we really appreciate them working with us and doing that for us. As you know, we've been putting on our final details together for a potential Thrive partnership in the Nevada property, which we'll be hearing about later today. And we're also accepting an award this week, another award for design, for the Liberty Park Branch from the local AIA chapter. So that'll be at the convention center later this week. Also been discussing and working on various initiatives with the mayor. Three areas were currently discussed is how the library can play a greater role in kindergarten readiness. And then creative partnership models to maximize community assets. That would be the Thrive partnership. The mayor's really excited about the potential of this sort of model. And tomorrow, I'll be meeting the folks on our shelter system. I imagine they might see maybe their team show. So really, you know, really excited to see these sort of efforts move forward. Our budget process also starting looks kind of bleak at this point as far as what the resources are going to be for the entire city. But we're going to be there to help figure out what we can do and how we can move forward as a good partner with the city. And finally, our new trustee was approved by city council, I believe, last week. It's Mari Marhill, who is the executive director for the Center for Democratic and Environmental Rights. So we're excited to bring her on board.
Well, thank you. And I do want to say, you know, it has been a privilege to serve during these years, watching so much change, you know, and I think sometimes we focus on what has happened with our buildings. But I have to say that what has happened with the staff and inside the buildings has been incredible, really reimagining the library for the future. And so I want to say thank you and wonderful job to you, Andrew. It's really been so inspiring and so gratifying to see what's happened at the libraries in these last ten years. I can't wait to see what happens, so.
Thank you. So any questions for me? All right.
All right, thank you, Andrew. And now we are ready for the council liaison report. Council member Dylan.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Thank you so much. Had to close the blinds because my Irish self is getting sunburned through the office window. And I am going to have to jump off a little bit after this. I do apologize. I have a neighborhood council meeting to run to tonight regarding traffic calming, which I'll talk a little bit about for my council update as well. But just a couple, I think, kind of big items related to council business was the end of the legislative session. And so we were really excited as a city to see some of our legislative priorities get passed. Two of kind of the big ones was four million dollars for assistance with homelessness, so in particular, looking at how we phase out of track and have a new kind of stand-up facility that would include navigation center as well as a million dollars for kind of expansion of the street medicine model that we've been seeing a lot of success around the country. There's a similar program that actually former governor Greg Ward was really involved with, with Challenge Seattle, that really looked at expanding more of this behavioral health substance abuse response unit. And I will definitely be talking to Andrew and the team at the libraries about this expansion. We had our first town hall last night at the Northeast Community Center. This was something that we would use to do pre-pandemic, where we heard from different neighborhoods. It was a wild success, really great engagement. We tend to keep our legislative agendas kind of light for these meetings out of deference to giving neighborhoods more time to talk about reports. But one of the items, well, two of the items that we did decide to defer was our traffic calming ordinance, and so this will be coming up for a vote on the twenty-fifth. And we have a really exciting cycle of projects that are coming out that will help with safe routes to school, a lot of pedestrian access. This is something that has been delayed, so I'm really excited to get these funds out the door. And they are distributed pretty equitably between different districts across the city. Another item that we deferred was a sheltering contract with Jewels Helping Hands. They've been operating some warming centers at different churches, kind of utilizing the scatter model, where you have kind of one place that has twenty beds rather than a larger group kind of congregating. This has been, I think, well, more cost-effective, but also I live down the street from one of these locations, and the footprint has been really minimal, so we're excited to support this. We will be having a special council meeting this Thursday at eleven AM, where I expect us to approve this contract as well as a resolution for free fares with STA for Expo seventy-four, for the Expo seventy-four celebration. There's going to be, it's called the North Bank Shuttle, that's going to have a downtown route during Expo. Kind of STA proposal was to do fifty cents for fifty years, but there's a lot of momentum right now to see if we can have it be a free fare. We've seen, especially with the Central City Line, when we did an initial launch with free fares, a lot of new riders come from that. And then just for me, one of the big items that I've been working on is addressing fentanyl and, you know, our overdoses. We've certainly seen a lot of, well, hearing from a lot of providers about an increase in overdoses. And I wanted to find out more, kind of exactly what that meant. I was running into some challenges getting current data always kind of pointed in different directions. So wrote a resolution to do a couple things that would really kind of centralize real-time data reporting that I think will help inform a lot of our policies as well as asking for the governor to declare either a state of emergency or public health crisis. We've seen eight states do this, and it has freed up a lot of resources to help with overdoses. And then have a town hall. This will be April ninth, on April ninth, at the Central Library. So putting together some panelists to discuss, where do we go from here on addressing this crisis? And some best practices, different policies that are available to us, and things that we can be doing better. So that's it for council updates.
All right, thank you, Council member Dylan. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a question about the traffic calming. Where can we find out more information about that, all the?
Yeah, should be a city page up about current traffic calming projects. I, there's, so there's two cycles. I want to say it's cycle ten and eleven. One of those got delayed from, I want to say, two thousand and twenty-two. So these, they were bundled together. So this is the approval of the two thousand and twenty-five traffic calming applications. And it should have every project listed out. Part of the delay was we actually found out that we might have a little bit more funding than we thought. And so we're trying to see if maybe we could squeeze in some more projects. But it sounds like that might be a challenge, I mean, just with trying to go out for bid and get these out the door ASAP, because neighborhoods have been wanting to, wanting to see this, and we want to deliver. But yeah, I'm happy to email that in a follow-up.
All right, thank you. So now I think we are ready to move on to the communications report. Amanda?
Hi, everyone. So this is the February report, so it sounds a little bit like old news, but so looking back at what happened in February, but the library levy passed. And we got a lot of earned media about that. So we had twelve earned media stories overall in February. And two of the top topics were the levy passing, and also we did a press release about our new music education, part-time music education specialist that we were able to hire with a grant. That filled, that media coverage filled up those openings for lessons immediately. So we've gotten a few, even a few more requests for media that we've declined because those are always full, even now that we have additional staffing for that. So that continues to be a very popular offering. We also had an amazing Lunar New Year celebration. We had some media coverage on that, but also we saw twelve hundred people come to Shadle Park Library. There was a dragon dance. There were other dances and demonstrations there that were really amazing. As Andrew mentioned, we presented at WLA, thirteen different staff members did, including our team. We did our presentation on brand messaging. So that's the second time we've done that presentation. We've actually been invited to speak again virtually at the Library Marketing Conference in May at a virtual edition of that, present that content again. So that content has just proven very popular with the library audience, and that's all about honing in your message, so it speaks to your audience. And then right now, we're just really looking ahead to April. We're spending a lot of March preparing for April. April is a busy month for us. We have a library giving day at the beginning of the month. We have National Library Week is the second week of April, and we have different things planned to celebrate that. We have Friends at the Library Book Sale is coming up in April, at the end of April, twenty-third through twenty-fifth.
Twenty-second through twenty-second.
Twenty-seventh. At Shadle Park Library, Earth Day. We've got lots of different Earth Day celebrations as well, so just really gearing up for an exciting and busy April. Questions for me? Yes?
I'm really excited about Friends of the Library. And I'd like to know if you are a member of the library. To go in.
If you're, if you're a Friends, if you're a Friends of the Library member, for ten dollars, I believe it is, ten dollars, you get access to the pre-sale the day before it opens to the general public.
Here at the event, and even get first pick if you crack the box.
Only if you're there, there's going to be an awful lot of books to carry.
All right, excellent. Any other questions for Amanda? All right, thank you, Amanda. And now we are ready for the programming report with Jason Jones.
All right. February is the shortest month of the year, so we decided to do the most programs ever. We did three hundred and eighty-four total programs and one-on-ones in February, which is nuts for over five thousand people. Value score went down by a tenth of a point, but that's very easily explained. We've been working with some staff to adjust their scores a bit. They were kind of padding their scores at the beginning, so we're, you'll probably see another dip most likely next month, because I think we're going to really see that flesh out. Just, I went through with everybody, trying to make sure they understand how to interpret the questions accurately. So like you said, Lunar New Year, storytime at three hundred people at Shadle. The Dragon Dance at four hundred was just one of the biggest programs we had in the month. We had Nerf Wars at the Central Library for teens. They brought in a hundred and sixteen's and a bunch. We had to turn away some with tears to our, because they weren't old enough. Yeah, I just think if we feel too bad. It was a, it was a popular program. Nothing was broken in the library. Lots of darts found. We brought back our Lego experts, whose names are escaping me right now, but Eddie and Aziza, and they were on the Lego Masters TV show a few seasons ago and continue to bring in a lot of people. At this time, it was at the Hive. KYRS, our in-house radio station, had their most successful event last month, with two hundred and sixty-one people showing up for a blues concert, who knew? And so that was the final of their winter concert series, and it's part of their MOU with us of doing programs inside the library for the public. They're continuing doing these concerts in the future as it is a good fundraiser for them. They run the bar at it, and it's also a good way to get people in the library. We partnered with Downtown Spokane Partnership, Carl Maxey Center, and the Spokane City Council to host the Black History Month event, Resources and Empowerment, on the third floor of the library. And as we mentioned, we pretty much doubled music lessons in February up to sixty, which is what the goal was with doubling the amount offered, but yeah, there aren't any available. You get to get on the calendar sixty days in advance and hope you claim one of those things, so it's very popular. Tomorrow night, this isn't February, but we will be hosting a, the NLCP is having a town hall and their general meeting discuss racism in schools, specifically the Wilson Elementary Newsletter that went out. If anybody's interested in that, it's six thirty to eight tomorrow on the third floor. And I've, we're starting to break the value score into a youth component and an adult component. It's just trying to compare apples to oranges for too long, so you're going to start seeing the chart for both of them, and we're Trying to compare apples to oranges for too long. So you're gonna start seeing the chart for both of them and we're gonna start. Kind of pulling the tool apart a little bit too. So there'd be a separate evaluation tool for youth programs here as we get that built, so. And this is one of the things, value score is one of the things we presented on at the conference. And I think I've sent out all the spreadsheets and stuff to the twenty-four or twenty-five people now that were in that thing. So I was really interested. Or be interested if people have the event. People want to know how we do, what we're doing. So, any questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jason. All right, and now we are ready for new business. The, uh, final acceptance for Indian Trail.
Yes, thank you. Um, so actually both of these agenda items under new business are identical. Um, so these are for the Capital Bond Fund Final Acceptance with Meridian for Indian Trail as well as South Hill renovation. So along with, um, with this item, we've got some correspondence included with it, which is the Washington State. L and I Public Works Portal Snapshot of our project status. Um, a snapshot of the contract displaying the required documentation, which has been reviewed. Uh, the Meridian Construction Certificate of Substantial Completion. As well as the Integris Architecture Certificate of Substantial Completion. For the Indian Trail renovation, the, um, amount of retainage left. After all, um, everything is approved through, um, all three of these state agencies. Uh, retainage currently is two thousand six hundred ninety-three. And then for your information on the South Hill renovation, that retainage amount, uh, current balance is eight thousand three seventy-seven.
All right, questions for Nicole?
Do we need two separate motions?
I just don't want to have to repeat everything like a little.
Well, I move that we grant final acceptance of the Indian Trail Public Works Project.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
I moved that for the final acceptance of the South Hill.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Nicole. And now we have the policy on use of social media with Amanda.
So today I bring to you an updated policy on our social media. Um, our existing social media policy was written in twenty-ten. Uh, when, and it says in the social media policy that we have now, it's an emerging platform. Um, and lists such, uh, platforms such as MySpace in that document. Um, so we all know that that has evolved quite a bit in the past fourteen years and so our policy needs some modernization as well. So aside from incorporating a more accurate list of the existing landscape of social media, we've also added more specific language about how to handle harassment and other trolling behaviors. That we unfortunately encounter fairly often on our social media platforms. And I like to think of this as, as writing a policy that will allow us to kind of apply our code of conduct to the social media sphere of. Um, activities that people are doing there. So, um, this policy has been updated by our legal counsel at the city. And today I'm asking the board to approve the proposed update to the use of social media policy.
All right, any questions for Amanda?
Amanda, I see under three point one, point three about, um. Uh, staff members, professional personal lines can use the word online. Um, this is specifically for anything that's posted on the library sites.
Now, we have some procedures that we've written that are just kind of guidelines to encourage safe use of, of social media as a, as a private citizen. This is specifically for Spokane Public Library, social media accounts.
That includes us, right? Well, great.
This is not written to include trustees. It doesn't include trustees here at all.
So Amanda, just so I'm understanding, there are procedures for employees specifically as it relates to what they're using their personal social media. I, on behalf of the library to post, but I think those are lines that I can see get blurred with staff sometimes as well.
Kind of two things. Um, one is just some. Suggestions on how to operate safely in the social media, specific to like doxing and things like that, that we were concerned about and making sure that people were aware of that. We cannot restrict what a private citizen, even an employee says about the library. Um, on their social media as far as, you know, their First Amendment rights. Um, so does that answer your question?
Okay, our staff either allowed or encouraged to represent, so like I'm. Going to do a storytime and I am an employee. All the guidelines are on me posting something on social media. Say like, come see me at storytime. Um.
That, that's encouraged and allowed, um, with the caveat that you're being, you know, you're putting yourself out there as a public person on social media and there. Potential risks associated with that, but that's encouraged and allowed for sure.
Okay.
Um, but then I don't have guidelines. Within this framework because I'm still my own individual.
You know, a lot of times those are in HR policies, how.
Yeah, yeah.
In the public as a representative of, you know, so.
The other thing that we recommend on any. In, outside of this policy, but in the procedure is to put in your, in like on your Twitter account, you know, my opinions are my own and not, do not reflect the opinion of my employer.
Yeah. Well, I can, uh, move to pass the commissary's amendment to the policy on the use of social media.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, and now we have the real estate transaction and lease agreement with Thrive International. Karis?
All right, thank you. I want to apologize to everybody ahead of time. This is the wordiest PowerPoint presentation. And I have a better come up with and it hurts my heart a little bit to put it in front of you. But this is a very complex thing and I'm going to be asking you to, uh, approve. So please bear with me. I've got with me here Mark Finney, Executive Director at Thrive International, in case we've got any additional questions. Um, can you advance the slide a little? Um, so. Um, so we're trying to partner with Thrive to, uh, enhance community services for the library and provide affordable housing for refugee populations. What we're hoping to do is take the surplus property that the library owns and transfer it over to Thrive so that we can do something cool with it. Specifically, Thrive wants to develop multifamily housing that targets refugee populations and integrating them as, uh, citizens of the United States. Um, and we would like to incorporate a community room into that building, uh, very similar to some of the other spaces that we have in our libraries and at the Hive. In addition to the lease community room, there's also a section of the property that will be dedicated to a geodesic dome and a greenhouse for community garden space. Um, and what we're going to be talking about here today is all of the different documents that are incorporated into that. And, uh, give you assurance that the library's interests are covered, um, throughout the process. But in the end, we're hoping that this project will result in lasting benefits for the community, both from Thrive's perspective and from the library's perspective. Next slide, please. So. Yes, 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 yes. Um, so why are we doing this? We, we want. Part of the library's purpose is to be the platform for community partners. Thrive is a very, uh, visible and highly impactful partner in our community and one whose values align very closely with our own. By doing this, we're able to create a new example for what, uh, public-private partnership can look like. And we're able to expand library services in a way that we wouldn't be able to do on our own. Uh, when we were looking at this Nevada property initially, it was going to be all garden space. This gives us the opportunity to create some indoor space in the north side that is, uh, sorely needed. So the agreement that we're going to be talking about consists of a real estate agreement, an MOU, a lease agreement, an easement agreement, and a covenant agreement. Next slide, please. All right, the first one we're gonna look at is the purchase and sale agreement. So what this thing says is that we are going to sell this property to Thrive International for ten dollars. If Thrive fails to fulfill their obligations, the property will revert back to us. Um, Thrive is committed to building what they said they're gonna build, multifamily housing, including a community room for, uh, library use. Um, we, the property will come with an easement for library services so that we're guaranteed this plot of land with the garden, with the, uh. The dome and the greenhouse for the period of fifty years, the same, uh, term as the community room lease. And there's also a covenant that Thrive will develop the property consistent with the plan. Next slide, please. So the MOU is kind of a, a newer element to this. Um, so when. Uh, Thrive's architects started looking at the site plan, they saw some different things than our architects did and they wanted to, they suggested a change. Um, will you, the next slide, this shows you, uh, what the old. Uh, site plan looked like and the new one. So in this one, um, the garden space is back away from. The street, so it's a little harder to see with this new one. It puts it right up on the street. So that it's very visible from the public side and it also divides the housing over that sewer pipe that we all know and love. And it allows Thrive to create more apartments. I want to say something in the, in the vein of twenty extra.
Yeah.
Yeah, so really sizable difference that they're able to make. So when we showed this to our architects, our architects were like, duh, why didn't we do that? Um, and so we advanced forward, Thrive is going to cover the costs for changing those, uh, the site plan. And that's what this MOU shows. Uh, the next thing is the lease. The lease is a fifty-year with option to renew, uh. Space in the community room. Uh, this will be a nominal cost also, ten dollars of rent per year to pay to thrive. Um, this document also defines what the community room use, maintenance and operations and accessibility is gonna look like. For the most part, Thrive is covering. All of the maintenance associated with the building, the janitorial, the snow removal, that sort of thing. Any kind of operational cost of what we're putting in there, the technology and that stuff is gonna be on us. Uh, the easement agreement provides us with access to that greenhouse garden space, uh, for the term of fifty years. And with, this just guarantees that regardless of who owns the property, if Thrive for some reason sells the property, we will retain access to those amenities. Um, throughout even, uh. To the next owner, which is very similar to how the lease agreement carries on to the next owner if the apartment building were to be sold. It just outlines the responsibility of the library for maintaining the maintenance in the egress area. And it guarantees continued public access into the future. The covenant agreement is kind of a little bit longer form thing that one of our, our real estate attorney recommended. Rather than putting it into the purchase and sale agreement because it's kind of a sizable thing in and of itself. And basically what it look, what it says is just that Thrive is going to build what they say they're going to build. They're going to get the property, they're going to develop it in this way, they're going to provide the easement access, they're gonna provide the community room. And if they don't, the property reverts back to us. Uh, so what are we doing here to protect the library's interests in this complex transaction? One is the reversal of ownership. So. Uh, as we've seen in a number of the documents, if Thrive does not carry through on their obligations, the property reverts back to us. That's probably the number one. Thing that we've got. So we know that we're gonna get, uh, what we intended out of the property. Otherwise, we're going to get the property back in its original condition. Um, the covenant guarantees, uh, the specific terms that Thrive must adhere to in developing the property. And we have rights that we can enforce if those things are not met. So if Thrive decides they're gonna build convenience stores instead of apartment buildings, we can step in and say, you know, you can't do that. Um, we have a ninety-day period to remedy, remedy any conflicts, um, and have a fair opportunity to address issues with Thrive. Um, if there's any violation of any of these agreements, we have legal recourse that we could take against Thrive and, uh. We reserve the right to take action on these things, even if we don't do it within that ninety-day period. Next slide, please. So the action that we're requesting of the board today is the approval of all of these documents. The real estate purchase agreement, the MOU, the lease agreement, the easement agreement, covenant agreement. And to authorize Andrew to execute these agreements on behalf of the library and the library board. And also give him the authority to, or his, for him or his designee to work with legal counsel to make small edits to these documents going forward into the future to make sure that. Um, all of the library's interests are covered and all of our words are capitalized and things like that. Um, and lastly, for the, for the board to endorse this idea, um, just to give us the thumbs up and say that we've got the support for it. And to give me an honorary law degree.
He, just, I mean, to work through the complexity that has, you know, been required to get to this point. I mean, Karis has really untied a bunch of knots and retied them. And then cut them and then spiced them and then here we are. Uh, it's been, uh, really, really amazing effort on your part. So thank you.
Thank you. We're just so excited to kick off this project with Thrive.
And Mary, when you were speaking of exciting things for the next ten years, I think this is gonna be the start.
I'm so glad the last time was at my last meeting because I'm really, you know, having no time for this. So thank you. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, Laura, I assume that you have gone through all of these documents. As our, as kind of our resident expert on some of this real estate stuff.
Sure, I'll just take, uh, have a, a little bit of a feedback comment to that question. Yes, I reviewed them and I actually, um, chatted with Andrew today about a couple of. You know, the, the capitalization things that I'm always catching, but, uh, but then also, um, some questions to ask council just to make sure that councils cover, uh, comfortable, that the language is clear and has the intent that it appeared to have in reading through it. I'd also like to, um, add my, uh, my thanks to Karis and on everybody who worked on this. They are, uh, quite a. Complicated web of agreements that work together and I found them, um, clear and I, I understood what, you know, what was going on and I think, um, they're, they're, uh, they're going to serve the library well.
Thank you. Gives me a lot of confidence and thank you, Karis, for what you've done. Now, the reversion on that. Um, what's the timeline? Is there a timeline specified in here? Where it talks about Thrive fulfilling their obligations? Is there a timeline?
Yeah, by twenty twenty-nine. So we've given them a five-year period to allow their, assuming about within three years, I want to say, but we wanted to give a little bit of extra buffer time for delays and things like that. And also we have the ability to, um, converse with Thrive and work things out if there's some sort of obstacle in the road. But yeah, the, the five-year time horizon is what we've. Put down as an expectation for the community room. Uh, of course, the, uh, the easement portion with the dome and the greenhouse will be happening prior to the construction of the apartment buildings and the twenty-four-seven kiosk and all of that will be. Available, um, hopefully by the end of the summer.
My last question, um, under the MOU, um, it does say, uh, let's see that, um. The, uh, expected increase of the costs to be approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that Thrive, uh, commits to play, to pay up to forty thousand of that. Um, I assume that it's over forty thousand, which sometimes happens, that then the library is responsible for that.
Um, we're probably just gonna draw the line at forty thousand.
Okay.
We'll figure out a way to engineer it at that point to make sure that it works because our money is tapped.
Okay. That's all my questions.
The, uh. This is different.
This is different uh, in the, the, in what you guys are preparing or presenting now for rental. Then now it's all, starting with the baseline of thirty percent of the units, and then expanding the population to be refugee families and American workforce. Within the fifty percent that you are setting aside for lower than market rate. Would you care to speak to that?
Yeah, so some of that comes with um, with being able to redesign the site and have more units. Um, we're still shooting for, and, and some of this is related to some of the um, grants and other incentives. That come along with building affordable housing. So we're targeting at least fifty-one percent of the units being classified as affordable. So that we can qualify for some of the city and state exemptions. Um, but that's why some of those numbers are a little different in terms of the number of units for each group. One of the things that we're excited about with the new design is that we actually have the opportunity to potentially put in some larger units. Some three-bedroom, two-bath units, which are very hard to access in Spokane. And so we're hoping that we can serve some of the larger families as well, who come through by uh, having a little bit more of a diversity of floor plans.
Yeah. Is there, so originally, there was talk about having half of the units set aside specifically for refugee and immigrant families. And then holding a two-year decrease in, in rent. So now is the plan that there would, they would just continue to rent below for a longer period of time, or? Um.
Yeah, so we, with the new configuration of units, we, we aren't yet committing to exactly what the program will look like for each tenant. I think some of it depends on how the building goes and like, for example, if we can add those three-bedroom units versus if it ends up. Being important to turn those into two-bedroom and one-bedroom units on the same floor plan. So some of that is still, has to be worked out as we get like, to the point of bidding things with the general contractor to actually create them. But the intention is still the same, that we are definitely gonna offer below-market rents uh, in the first two years. For newly arriving refugees. And if they choose to stay, then the plan is we would bring those up to market rate. And, you know, unless there's extenuating circumstances, like what we're doing with the folks that live with us at the Thrive Center downtown. We've got fixed period of time with the discount, and then we generally try to bring people up closer to market value. So that uh, so that we encourage them to find other housing that's sustainable, once they're able to make that. But if there's extenuating circumstances and for some reason, you know, they've lost their job recently or other things, we always maintain the, the option of extending that discount longer. Based like these spaces.
Okay.
Uh, but the thought is that we would hope to keep a certain percentage of units below market, even if some of the tenants stay longer than the time period. So if somebody moves in, they get a discount for two years, they wanna stay there, the discount goes away. But the next apartment that opens up, we offer it a discount to the next family that comes in for their first two years.
What do you consider affordable?
So we're targeting eighty percent area income as sort of that threshold. Part of that is, that's a, it's a dividing line for some of these incentives. We're hoping that, you know, we're trying to be pretty conservative with the numbers of what we're creating. Uh, and if, if things work out a little bit better, rents go up in the next two years, for example. But by the time it's ready to be occupied, then we might be able to discount some of the units a little bit more steeply, but that eighty percent AMI is, is the target.
So what's the average dollar amount?
That we're looking at for projected rents right now?
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna, I remember the three bedrooms, we're looking at around eighteen hundred a month for the three bedrooms. And then there's two different variations of the one-bedroom, one-bath, and the two-bedroom, one-bath. Um, and I'm thinking that it was something like thirteen hundred a month for the one-bedrooms and. Fifteen for the two bedrooms.
And that is market rate or that is below market rate?
That's sort of the baseline that we're looking at, and then markets could go a little up from there. Yeah.
Can I do it?
Any other questions or discussion?
This is super exciting. It's for all the work you guys have put into this.
Yeah. And I would also like to say that um, I, I, it's really important that we're also delegating to Andrew the ability to make. Um, amendments within the spirit of the documents, so that as legal counsel is working through the final touches. That he's able to make those edits without causing our approval to be questioned, so I'm fully supportive of that as well.
So I'm gonna make the motion to approve the sale of the surplus property to Thrive International. The execution of the easement agreement with Thrive International. The execution of the covenant agreement with Thrive International. The execution of the MOU with Thrive International. Execution of the lease agreement with Thrive International. And the authority for the executive director or designee to make changes to these documents as advised by legal counsel.
Excellent. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion that anyone wants to bring up? Alright, hearing no further comments, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much, congratulations. Alrighty, do we have any additional agenda items or changes to add at this point? I cannot hear anything in the room, so I'm.
We're good.
Like, oh, they're all silent. How'd that happen? Um, alright, and do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Nope.
Okay.
No, go on.
And uh, my understanding is that there's no reason for an executive session tonight. So, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at the Liberty Park Library. Uh, and with that, we are adjourned. Oh, thank you very much.